Good afternoon, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, October 7. We have a little bit of a change in the agenda. We're going to start with number two. So we'll start with the presentation from Lynn County Emergency Management. Chief?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to present BJ DeVorek with Lynn County Emergency Management. Who's going to provide a presentation this afternoon on the emergency management program? So this is an annual presentation that we've been doing the last few years with a lot of our partners, in which we have a 2080 agreement with. And, you know, just a little bit of comment. I recently celebrated my three-year anniversary here in Team Marion. And I'm really pleased with the relationship that we've been building with Lynn County Emergency Management. I think, you know, in this space where, you know, emergency management work is very challenging in that you're dealing with disasters, and relationships are just critically important. And the work that we've done as a team, you know, fostering trust and doing the diligence on the front end. There's no doubt in my mind that that will transcend to efficient, effective work on the back end. It's still going to be a tough time whenever we do have to navigate through these matters in our future. But I'm confident in our partnership with Lynn County Emergency Management. And so, BJ, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chief. Welcome, BJ.
Good afternoon. Well, I'll keep this short and sweet for you guys, so we'll go through it. So, emergency management staff, so the only change that we've had so far over the last year. Tom Ulrich has retired as the operations and readiness officer. Pete Brisbane is our new officer readiness officer that we just brought on. He started December 23rd of '24. He's been doing a great job so far. With our emergency operations center, so last October, the communications department participated in some public information planning updates that we did. Having, you know, public information personnel is crucial during any activation. When we bring in, you know, staff our operations center, we could have 50, 60 people in there. So having them is crucial. So I just want to shout out to Amber for the work that she's put in for the PIO staff. So, our communication center, so storm watch, this is something that we do, it seems like lately, quite a bit with severe storms. So Marion Fire is one of our partners that coordinates with us. They provide storm watch, so they actually, you know, take their trucks out, sit out on the roads and give us real-time information on, you know, any kind of severe weather that's approaching. And then we can, we're sitting in this room, this picture here, and that's where we watch the radar, talk to the National Weather Service, activate the outdoor warning sirens. So, I'm just great having them out to give us real-time information. Our local emergency planning committee, LEPC, Marion Police Department, they're a voting member of the LEPC. So they assist when we go through our planning. We get our first responders, our private industry together. And this is a lot to do with hazardous material events. So it's great having them in there with us. The ESF-10, the hazmat plan, it's a yearly plan that we have to do per the state every year. So every year, we usually have an officer that comes in and helps us go through the planning process. So our community emergency response team, or CERT, we started our team, kind of revitalized it back in 2020. So the members include several, there's several Marion residents as well as others from around Lynn County. CERT team training, so they do some sort of training every month. There's some pictures here of fire extinguisher training. And there was, I think they were putting someone on a backboard. So they do quite a bit. They can help us do damage assessment during a disaster, provide support in the EOC, you know, and they can also help set up a shelter until Red Cross is able to get on site. So we continue to work with City of Marion as they grow their newly-formed CERT team as well. Traffic control training, so Marion Police Department was able to put on this class for the CERT team members. And then, once they got trained, they actually got to help Marion with the Arts Festival 5K race. I think if I had that right. So I think there were several members that got to assist with that. CERT basic training classes, we've had, there was one put on back in November of '24, and then another one was in June of '25. They've kind of done like a joint training, so at Fire Station 1 and at our facility out at Kirkwood, we've used those two spaces to train a whole bunch of people that are wanting to get involved with the CERT team. They're actually going to be doing another class this week, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. There'll be another class. I think there's eight people so far that are signed up for that, so that's exciting. Marion Fire will be helping with teaching some of those classes, including the fire safety portion. So it'd be great to have that. Our 25 fireworks and fireflies event, so that was great, another year of, we got to help you guys out with that. We had our command center out there and they brought the Rapid Trailer. So we were able to staff that and kind of watch the weather and just make sure that everyone was safe during that event. And it was another good year of lots of people were in attendance, so we were happy to assist with that. The CERT rodeo, so this was, I believe this is the third annual, this is the first one for us that we hosted. This was at Lau Park. This was back on, let me see here, September 27th. So we had, there were seven CERT teams from all over Iowa that were in attendance to this, probably 35 to 40 people. Basically, they got to go hear presentations, do interactive drills, and just a lot of like disaster-related activities. So we got a lot of positive feedback. So I don't know, Chief, if you got any, do you get any positive feedback from people for?
Oh, yeah, yeah. For the rodeo? I was fortunate to be a panelist at the event, and there was a lot of engagement afterwards and comments about future opportunities for CERT. So, yeah, lots of positive.
And this was just a picture we took. The left one is a drawn picture we took of some of the equipment that was out there. On the right, this was something that, I can't remember which fire department it was, but they, it's a cribbing exercise where you're, teach people how to stabilize heavy debris. So they had to try to take this blue ball and move it from one side all the way down to the other side, and then they were timed. So it was kind of fun watching them all go through and work together as a team to see who could get that done the fastest. And last thing, one of the last things, so our community preparedness open house. We were able to have that here at Fire Station Number One here in Marion. People came in from the community and were able to talk to CERT members. They could do hands-only CPR, and then they were able to learn how to use a fire extinguisher. So I think there were close to 20 members of the community that came to that. So it was another really good event. And last thing, community planning. So we're just, you know, fortunate to have, you know, everyone from Marion that helps out with our stakeholder planning sessions. We have to do so many of those throughout the year, just getting our plans up to date. So I just want to thank, you know, everyone that's a part of City of Marion for being able to help us out. That's all I got. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions? Go ahead.
Well, BJ, you know, there's a lot of effort to establish the preparedness for a multi-hazard's response, which is what I think you all focus on. And the great thing is, all of that effort and all of that planning, and you really just hope you never have to use it. So, but the minute we need it, it's absolutely vital that that preparedness and capability is instantiated into the community. So thanks for your efforts on all of that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you for coming in. Thanks for the partnership.
You betcha.
All right, now we'll go back to number one. I see Julie is in the audience, so welcome, Julie.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. It's always a privilege to talk about tourism and what's happening in Lynn County. So I'm going to skip this. Oh, just the arrow down. Perfect. I'm going to skip ahead here. So a little bit about our staff. So there's our team, and we're proud to have three proud Marion residents on staff. So Emily and Paige and Jay all call Marion home, so we love having Marion represented on our fabulous team. So just a reminder of our mission, we're really focused on those visitor dollars and getting that outside money into our county. In 2023, that resulted in over $481 million and putting over 5,000 of our residents to work. So that's a number we're really proud of. Here this month, October 23rd, we will get the state numbers and find out what that looks like for 2025. So we're eager to see what our growth looks like. So return on investment, we're mostly funded through hotel motel tax and then a destination marketing fee that we collect from our hotel visitor guests. And with that funding, what we do with that, so we spend a lot of time on the road doing sales travel. We've got Emily out at a large global show with Travel Iowa right now. I have three shows in the next four weeks, and we're out there meeting with planner, tournament directors, meeting and convention planners, group tour operators, international tour operators, to really make sure we're putting our county and our state on the map. As all of us in this room know, Iowa isn't a top-of-mind location. We're not Vegas. We're not Chicago or those locations, and that's okay. We want to be authentic to who we are and the people that experience our community. That's what they love about us. So we're out getting in front of those folks. We're bringing them in for familiarization tours so that they understand what we are as a community and connect. We're offering servicing to sports tournaments, to meeting and conventions. We use it for event bid fees and incentives to bring people here, for marketing, and for our visitor guide are just a few of the things that those dollars go towards. But to the exciting stuff, a little recap of what happened this year. So FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America, the Iowa chapter, has just signed on with Lynn County for, through 2030. So we get to see them for the next several years. It's a wonderful group. We see over 500 students, sometimes up to 800, from across the state in our community, and it's exciting to host them. On the left, we've got Black Girls Hike. That was a group that we connected with on the road, and it was wonderful. Their leaders were talking about how they're really trying to get past the stereotype that black women don't enjoy the outdoors. And I said, "Well, we're trying to get past the opinion that only white people are in Iowa." So it should be a perfect partnership. And they were just lovely. We got to see them last year here, and we did some wonderful hiking events with them. They actually were a little nervous to put it out because, again, we're not a top-of-mind location. And when they opened it to their members, they actually sold out within just a few hours, and we had to add more, a larger room block, and we saw more people come. And I just met with them at a show a couple weeks ago, and they said they've never repeated a location, but their members are asking to come back to our area. So we will see them again in 2027. So that was exciting. You'll see our International Association of Automobile Locksmiths. Who knew, right? And an international group, we were able to book, and wonderful group of individuals who, they get together once a year, and they get, their complicated locks are brought in, and they have to figure out how to open them. So I try to make that not sound like a crime when I share what they do, but they're basically picking locks and learning how to do that. So a lot of fun to have them, and exciting that we are known on a national and international level now. These are who we're competing against, big cities, and we're winning, and that's something that we're really proud of. Sports tourism, we had a lot going on this last year. We had girls wrestling. We saw third through eighth grade girls, and we saw over 9,000 people come to watch those young women athletes compete, and that was really exciting. We've got, men's wrestling continues to be a big draw for us. The International Jugglers, which you see up there, they have actually been to our community before. This is another group who normally doesn't repeat communities. We've had them here twice, and now they are coming back in 2027 to celebrate their 80th anniversary. And we will see over 800 jugglers around Lynn County. Again, who knew, right? And they, I thought jugglers, that's just throwing balls up in the air. Evidently, it's fire and all sorts of things. And they'll be out doing things for the public and wanting to engage in the public. So if there are ways for them to be involved in your community, let us know so we can support that. Looking forward, we're excited. We were able to announce marathon weekend. We expect 2,500 runners, June 7th in 2026. There'll be a full marathon, half marathon, 10K, 5K, and then what I'll probably end up doing, the kids' run. That's about a block. That's about my speed. But we are really excited. We've exceeded expectations in registrations and have, within the first month, there were over 500 athletes registered, and they were expecting maybe 200. So this is exciting, and this will be a repeat event. The course will change every single year, and they're really excited to be partnering with us. Our sales numbers, again, while we're out and about in the traveling, I'm on the road about 18 weeks out of the year. Jay is on the road at several sports events, and then, like I said, Emily and others are on the road as well, along and collaborating with the state. And we spent, we booked over 30,000 room nights this year just through the tourism office. We held over 416 one-on-one appointments with planners, all that resulted in 13 clients coming for site visits. So we're really seeing the results of being out there. Our housing and group servicing, we're really trying to make, create a memorable moment when these groups come in. Because, again, every community has a convention center, every community has sports facilities, and, but what they don't have is our residents and our heart, and we're really trying to connect that way. And so far, it's working. That is how we're really winning, winning over planners and these groups by making that. We had a planner with us recently who said, she's just been here, she said, "I've only been in your community in three times, and coming back this last time, it doesn't feel like I'm being welcomed to your hometown. It feels like I'm being welcomed home." And I think that says a lot to our airport and to our residents who are making that happen. We've been accused of setting people, of staging people around the county to be nice. "I don't have time to do that," and we tell them, "No, that's just, that's just who we are." Marketing, our marketing, we've seen tremendous growth this year. We had 121% growth in our social media followers. Our impressions are at 199% higher than they were last year. We are doing a revamp of our destination guide, which will be for 2026. Our website views are at 1.5 million. Our event calendar is the most visited part of our website, so we are always eager to share that, and we are really thrilled that our email open rate is at 44%, which is high for the industry. So everyone always wants social media and the viral posts, things that happen. So our three highest viral, if you would, posts that happened this year. So on TikTok, we did an ice cream spots, and we included a Marion Ice Cream Trail in that, and we ended up with over 81,000 views. But what we were really excited about is we had 719 people share that. And that really creates momentum so that people are looking and finding these spots to come and experience. For those of you that follow thrift and secondhand shopping, that has seen a real resurgence. And we did a post on Instagram. It featured puddle jumpers here in Marion, and we saw over 65,000 views on that with 42 shares, which we were excited. And then our sleeper that we had no idea on Facebook, we went and watched them make kolaches at St. Ludmilla's and ended up with over 97,000 views of that event. Evidently, everyone wants to know how to make kolaches. So a little bit about Marion and how we're incorporating you into our marketing efforts. We are so thankful. Marion is great at putting events on our meeting calendar, which is critical for us. That is what we put then in our email blasts and posts on social media, so we are incredibly thankful for that. You were featured in 29 of our weekly emails and in 70 of our social media posts. This last year, we did a dedicated post and featured Marion's Chocolate Shop, which did very well. The Marion's Art Festival did really well for us, along those lines also. So that is it in a nutshell, unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you. Questions?
Thank you.
So when it comes to, like, for the specific example of the jugglers organization coming back multiple times, what's like the strategy on your guys' end to, like, identify groups, say like, "Ah, that's a group I think we can get to come back?" And what makes them want to come back? I guess what's your point A to point B on that?
Absolutely. It all comes down to relationship building. The one thing I really focus on, what we all focus on on our team, is building genuine relationships. And we're finding the groups that we're able to build on those with, those are the groups that want to come back. And at our service level, we talk about that as well. It's the advantage of being here in Lynn County is we can really dedicate time to these groups that come in and try to give them these surprises and exceed the expectations of the group. And what we hear from planners is some of these larger communities, like Vegas or even Nashville, because they're so popular and there's so many people going, it's become like order-taking. And so these planners say, "We get, we're able to go in, we have to fight to get rooms and space, and then we get there and no one's paying attention to us." So I think it's the fact that we, as a community, pay attention.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you for your partnership.
Thanks, Julie. Appreciate it. Next item is a discussion on the National Community Survey. Amber?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We are planning to do our next National Community Survey through the National Research Center, and we have worked with them since 2017, and this is a tool used across the nation. They do a random sample survey, so we will have 3,000 residents invited to participate in that way. And then, near the end of that window, it will open up to all residents, and all residents will be invited to participate online. We intend to collect responses starting later this month and through November. And much of the survey is consistent year over year because we want to collect that trend data, to see where we've moved the needle, notice any changes that we need to zero in on. And so my recommendation would be to keep kind of the first 12 questions of the survey consistent with what we've asked in the past. And then we have the option to include two to four custom questions that we can kind of shape on our own. I would recommend carrying two of those, two that we've asked in the past forward. One asks about how residents like to receive information. So it's helpful for us to know if they're using the city website, our community newsletter, local media outlets, and the like. And we've asked this, since we've done the survey with the National Research Center, and so we do have a valuable trail of data that goes along with that. The one caveat I do intend to add this year would be adding our newsletters as an option. The in-focus newsletter and our departmental newsletters have not been included on that list and would like to add those as, to determine how residents get their information that way. The second question asks to what extent residents would oppose or a property tax increase or fee increase to support services. Again, this is a question we've asked pretty regularly, with just a few of the items on the list changing from time to time. I would propose that we include this one as it is, with the exception of the last item, ambulance service, at the request of Chief Fagan, and just some other survey work that's underway that has addressed that already, so.
I'm curious why schools is on there, since that's not really within our purview. Just curious.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great question. And I could certainly look back and see for how many years we might have asked that, just if it's a general question that the survey company.
Yeah, or did the schools ask us to include that, or?
Not to my knowledge.
I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'm just curious, because it's really not in our control, right? Okay.
So with these two questions, I'll finish then. So these would be the two I would recommend carrying forward with those edits, and I will be glad to follow up with the number of years we've included schools, just for some reference and where that might have come into play. Also included, for your consideration, the department heads kind of brainstormed last week a couple of options that we would bring to the table. One, asking familiarity with the city's financial and strategic planning processes related to budget development, the capital improvement program, comprehensive plan and strategic plan, just to really gauge, again, familiarity and if there are ways that we can enhance our outreach efforts in those regards, depending on what we hear. The other one, just given the increasing gap sometimes between the costs and revenues, would propose asking a question related to how residents would support or oppose increasing fees for service, decreasing fees for service, or decreasing services, I'm sorry, or potentially increasing sales tax, knowing and noting that that would be determined at the state level and not here locally. So presenting those for your consideration as well.
Is that something you want us to weigh in on?
If you would weigh in, that would be great.
Anybody have any thoughts?
We do. If you have other ideas, certainly open up to that as well.
Okay. Do you want that now?
Yes, if we could.
Is there more in your presentation? Okay. So do we have any thoughts on those two questions for, or I guess all of them for Amber? You had, the ones that you wanted to keep from?
It might be easiest to start with these, the previous two custom questions that we have asked in the past, if council is in general support of carrying those forward.
Okay, we'll start with Gage and then Grant.
I'm okay with all the questions. I actually have a separate question about the data gathering. We get the 3,000, like, random, and then we open it up after that. Do we keep the 3,000 random? Are we able to keep those separate? It's just to see, because I know when people are voluntarily doing a survey, you're going to get, you're more highly engaged people, or sometimes you're more highly dissatisfied people, so I'm kind of more interested in the, just the 3,000 random results.
Yes. The two sets of data are kept separate. And generally, what you see is, as the number of online participants increases in the open-to-everyone, that those results generally tend to follow what the random sample says.
Cool. I was just curious. Thanks.
Amber, do we see a significant differential between the formal survey, I'll call it, the 3,000 versus the online? Do we see a significant differential in results, or?
We, in terms of participation or in terms of sentiment?
Sentiment.
Generally not. Once we pass a certain threshold, the sentiment tends to follow what the random sample.
Okay. All right. And then, just a comment, I think the one item regarding our strategic planning and our financial planning practices, that seems to be a periodic, you know, bit of discussion that we always get at farmer's market or maybe the library. And so I'm really enthused that we ask that type of question to then gauge how do we appropriately do a little bit of community education on that whole topic.
Yeah, good questions.
Steve, did you have something?
No, I like the two additional questions.
I do too.
You know, so I would have not been able to come up with them myself, so I appreciate the work going into it. So, but I think that gives us some general feedback. This will be the first time for these two questions.
That is correct.
So I think the important thing about this is that we're really excited to be partnering with us. So I think the important thing about these surveys that we've always had is what's the trend? You know, the trend analysis, is the trend up? Is it down? Is it basically static? So to me, that's important. So this will be the first year for this. But like Grant said, I think if we can look for areas of improvement, some of this, these, maybe these two questions might give us some of that area of additional focus for improvement on how we communicate or interact with the residents, so.
Thank you.
Hello. This may not be the place for it, so maybe I'm off topic. But what's new? But we don't reference the Aquatic Center conversation in this at all. Are we going to do that at a future date?
I would, I would recommend, part of this service comes with an online tool that we have used for other surveys. Since the Aquatic Center is such a big topic and would benefit from multiple questions being asked, I would recommend using that tool in that format rather than trying to, with the very limited space that we have, include a question about the Aquatic Center in this format. There is a question on question 14. It does generally ask if people would support or oppose a tax or fee increase, and outdoor pool aquatic center is included, and that has been asked for the last few years. So I will point that out, but otherwise, for more than one question, I would, I would recommend a full survey.
Also, and I get it, we're very limited, so I understand. And we probably know too much, so then when we look at the list, we're like, but. So and I know we're trying to keep it up here, you know, because I look at them like community center. We ask it, but like, is that, do we need to ask that? I mean, in the fact that we are developing some of our existing resources into community center type of, of a situation? So is that a necessary ask? Are we just asking so that people will then be like, well, whatever happened to a community center? That's the only thing. I mean, it seems like Laux Park and the library have kind of evolved into being our community center locations for a lot of those events. But anyway, on the, on the last question, and I like that we're asking these, and the new questions, I guess, and I know we're limited again, I guess to me, it's going to be, I worry that the answers we receive in the rankings probably aren't a reflection because the devil's in the details. So someone may, you know, they're going to say, yeah, raise fees for services, but I only, I'm okay for these fees as long as they're not like my fees, or cut or decrease services. Well, what services would we cut or decrease would determine whether or not I support or oppose that. So I see that being a question that's going to get kind of reflected back to us or how those rankings play out. Because I think obviously, a lot of people are going to be like, well, you can cut services. I don't want my taxes raised, or how much would it raise? Or it's so general that I don't know if we're going to get great information back that we can rely on, or if we're just going to raise more questions. But I'm okay with asking it. That's just, I'm kind of putting that out there as a, that's the first thing I thought of when I saw those. Thank you. Good job.
Ballot. Anyone else? Go ahead.
First of all, thank you again, Amber, on this. This is obviously a lot of fun. To witness it from our side, I know a lot of these answers go into the algorithms too, when you're channeling these down to do a broad brush survey, when you take a look at and say, well, the community would support this, and you break them down by categories. I really liked that last question where we're identifying things that are out of our control, such as the state sales tax. However, there's, it also drives back some definition as to why some of these things are changing that we don't have control. Not that I would add another one to that, but I guess the one I would have brought back in would be the local option sales tax over a state-controlled sales tax, because that's, that's a broad brush. However, the local option sales tax does go on the ballot, and it also does allow people to reflect on where these fees and services are coming from. And even though we can't control them, it does allow us to gauge that algorithm of the understanding of the general public and understanding where those taxes go. So again, I like Steve, I'll applaud you, like everyone. These are great, and I really like these, these last two because it's really putting some of that meat and potatoes back into the details of where do we go from here? You know, I always tell people, we're not a, we're not a gross profit entity. It is a cash in, cash out. So if something's got to be given, what do we take? And, and what cash flows through the system? So I think that's a great, a great tool to kind of go back and answer a question with the question. You know, where do we, where would we like to see some of these changes? But I just wanted to say thanks again.
Thank you. We, we did have a conversation about including local option sales tax. Since it did recently extend for 20 years, thought it might cause more confusion than, than what it's worth, but certainly for council to, to decide if that's an important one to add.
This, I might have just a tail question to that, if I may, and maybe this is a legal question. Can the local option sales tax objective be amended at any time throughout the process? Or if there was, at the end of this sunset, we were to have this brought back forward, our 70-30 split, I mean, that is our, that is our ordinance to that. Can that be modified in the future if that were to be put on the ballot, revoted, but yet maybe that needs to be amended? Is that an option?
Yes, every time we reach a sunset and then we put it back on the ballot, we examine the language. And I believe last time we did bring that to council to make sure that we didn't want to make any amendments before we put it on the ballot.
Sure. And the only reason I bring it up is because I would think that would be a great topic to have discussion on towards the tail end of this one, towards that sunset, because maybe we, because we are doing such a good job on the CIPs and the other budgets and allocations that maybe those need to be tuned up just a little bit as to where the local option sales tax would go to in the future. Just maybe some consideration.
I also like those two questions. I think besides the actual information, I think they serve some other purposes, just infusing a little reality in the, you know, in the community and have a help in people kind of come to realization of some things. So, yeah, I'm good with it.
Very good. I will reconnect with staff and the consultant, and we'll get this survey ready to go. Thank you for your input.
Thanks for all your work, Amber.
You're welcome.
All right, next item is Chief Fagan with the overview of Insurance Services Office Reports.
All right, well, good afternoon again, Mayor and Council. Gary and I are going to do a presentation here to go over some insurance reports to share with you and the community. There's two reports that we're going to go over. One of them Gary is going to speak to and the other one that I'm going to speak to. But these insurance assessments influence insurance rates for our residents. And so we're going to be able to see some of the work that the city is doing to try to keep those rates down as low as we can for our residents. And we're also going to share some comparable data with our comparable communities in the rest of Iowa as well. And we're also going to talk about areas of opportunity where we're going to be continuing to work to try to improve our scores. So with that, I'll turn it over to Gary.
Thank you, Tom. Well, Mayor and Council, good afternoon. So ours is actually called the Building Code Effectiveness Grading Schedule. We use ISO because it's a lot easier. The ISO is an insurance service organization that, that rates each individual building department. We actually look at, they look at the building enforcement part of it. They look at many different things. They also, what, what helps is it does, like Tom said, it helps with the insurance underwriting. The impact on building codes is that you'll see that in a natural disaster, it will have up to 50% less reduction in, in damage because of the building codes. And a strong classification, like I said, can, can lower insurance costs. If you look at the table to the right there, one being the best and 10 being the worst, is, is very, it's achievable, but very hard to get to that, that's that one. Our goal would be to be closer to a two when we're all said and done. And there's things that we can do to improve that and make that happen. The state average is a six, and that looks at all the jurisdictions in the state of Iowa. That's just not in our area. That's, that's the full state. And that's both for commercial and residential. So in Marion, our commercial is actually a class three, which is not bad. If you, it's, it's much better than what the state average is. Our residential is a class four. And if you look at the comparison on the right there, most of our jurisdictions that we're comparable with are really close to being the same. Lynn County being the best that they have a two and a three, and that's, and that's where I would like to be in the next evaluation time, which should be about three or four years. And then again, we're, we're much better than what the state average of six is. Some of our significant gains over this year, one of the things that the inspectors had decided to do was that during the plan review, they were finding that there were a lot of questions on, on code requirements for the contractors. So they, they stepped up their game. They came up with a much stricter plan review system. And that was pretty much done by the inspectors, and it's, it has proved to, to pay off. And then the inspection checklist, we've always had inspection checklists ever since codes were developed. Some people use them, some don't. Our inspectors decided that they were going to revise it so that it really worked with what they were doing. And they've done that, and it really, it's really helped. It's, we had some significant gains in, in using that. It also helps them so that when they're going through a house or a commercial building, that we don't, we don't miss things that we, we're going through and we make sure that we get everything. Another place that we actually had some really good gains was our zoning and floodplain management. That is definitely a tribute to our engineering and planning departments and the enforcement of that that they do. And then we also had significant gains in our administrative training hours, which is how to administer the code, not just the aspects of the code, but how to actually administer it. So we, we did well there as well. Some of the places that we're going to need to work on and things that we've maybe have lost some points. One of the things is one that's not totally out of our control, but it's, it's really difficult. The code adoption, if you remember back in early 2023, we adopted the 2023 Electrical Code. The state later came back and told us we couldn't enforce that. So when we did our evaluation, they docked us points for that. The 2024 Building Code was just recently adopted this year. It wasn't actually publicized or published until late in, in '24. So it was a matter of we still, we still got that. But the code, the evaluation looks at it and says, well, it's a year-old code now, so you're, you've lost a little point. So we're working really hard with the state legislators to make sure that we can get codes adopted on a, in a timely basis. We did, our Iowa Association of Building Officials Group has a legislative committee. We worked with the legislators and did get the state to adopt the 2024 as well. So that was a, that was a big thing. And then some other areas that we have to work on is our staff training. We actually, believe it or not, didn't we, we got docked points for not spending our allotted budget. We were close. We really had, we left some money on the table, so to speak. And, and we're going to try and work on with staff to find the areas that we need to improve. We still had that money budgeted, so we will, you know, in the future years, we'll try and make sure that we get all the training we can. And also the technical training of that. We, as I told you, we gained in the, in how to administer the codes. Well, we, we lost points in the technical aspects of the code. So the actual code requirement training, we lost some points on. So we're also working with the inspectors to direct them, you know, what are we, what do we need for the city of Marion so that we can, we can do our job properly? And so they're going to start working a little more on technical training. And we also, we gained some certifications for our inspectors this last year, just not enough to really impact the score. And then lastly, we're, we're looking at our staffing levels. Now, not so much like hiring new people, although I'd take that if anybody wants to give it. We're actually looking at what areas that the inspectors needed to work on. So like, we, we're really residential heavy on our inspectors. So we need to get them to get more commercial inspections so we can, we can work the commercial score down as well. So I think that we're, we're really doing good there. But we want to, we want to really provide the city of Marion with a high-quality code inspection. And that's, that's our goal over the next three years. It was probably be, or maybe four when they do the, the next one. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Tom.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary.
Okay, so the other ISO assessment is called the Public Protection Classification or PPC Score. Again, the purpose of this is, this assessment is to recognize the efforts of communities on the risk reduction side, which influences the bet of insurance is essentially to protect those properties and as a predictor for future fire loss. This assessment is specifically focused on structural fires. So when we talk about here in a minute, and we show you the score specifically within the fire department, they don't consider anything relative to the other services and programs that we deliver, such as EMS, technical rescue, hazardous materials. It is specifically focused on our ability to fight and suppress structured fires. So the evaluation process includes several dimensions. The emergency communication system within our community is MCOM within the police department. And their score, they get a score comprises of 10% of the overarching score. The fire department is evaluated, and it is 50% of the overarching score. The water supply is evaluated, and it's 40% of the overarching score. And in the space of community risk reduction, you can get an additional five points towards your overarching score. Similar to what Gary was sharing on the table there on the screen, the lower the number, the better. ISO 1 is the best rating that you can get, and it is absolutely achievable, and it is a goal for us in the future. Going down to a 10, you'll see it, how the scores go down. I liken the, the PPC rating or the ISO score based on the point value similar to a grade scale. You'll see a 90 to 100% as a class one. That's like getting an A on your report card, right? So when we look at our score here in a moment, in a minute, you'll be able to see where we're at. So Marion's current PPC classification is a three rating. When we look at comparable jurisdictions, you'll see across all of our comparables generally a range between threes and twos, with North Liberty being at a four. Across the state, just as Gary had mentioned, the Iowa state average is a class six, and you'll see that, that general curve there. Again, I just want to emphasize that that includes all insurable properties across the entire state of Iowa. So in jurisdictions where the fire protection or water supply is different than here in Marion, you're going to see a difference in that score. Okay, so the table, so if you remember, I, I was talking about the percentage breakdown of the total score. So I want to focus your, your attention at first as the total credit of, at the bottom of that, at 72.12 out of 105 and a half, that's our grade. Okay, so that 72 puts us in that three, class three bracket. So now we're going to break it down by each one of these categories on how their percentage contributes to the overarching score. So emergency communications, and again, the evaluation lens that ISO uses for this is focused on structural firefighting. That is their look and how that influences the insurance rate. So they scored about 85% of the points possible. So very thankful for our partners and our teammates at MCOM. The fire department scored 57, almost 58% of the points that are possible. In the areas where there was significant deviation in that space was specifically in the areas of training, personnel, and deployment analysis. So I'm going to speak to each one of those in just a moment on the areas of opportunity and what we're doing to improve in this space. Moving on to water supply, the water supply score accounted for almost 95% of the points that are possible. And then community risk reduction was about 80% of the points possible. I want to speak to divergence for a moment, so you'll see that there's a negative number on there. That negative 7.35 points. What ISO does when they see an imbalance in some of the the contributing areas for the ISO score, they take away additional points to encourage a community to address some of the areas of imbalance. For example, if you have a very robust water system in place to provide fire suppression, but you don't have the resources to be able to deploy in a timely enough fashion to extinguish and suppress that fire, that is something that they evaluate and they recognize. I would make some crossroads here. In our recent standards of cover study, we've identified some response gaps in our community that we're going to be looking towards addressing in the future. And so that that is reflective of some similar analysis that we've seen in other studies. So that that negative seven points reduces our score then further. The good news is as we improve in some of these areas, it will have a compounding impact on on that divergence. So we're looking forward to seeing that in the future. So speaking to the training, as you're aware, we have a fantastic project underway with the Public Safety Training Center that's nearly completed. That and improved training records are absolutely going to benefit us in this area. And so we're looking forward to seeing improved scores within that space, which will no doubt improve our score. On the personnel side, here in the last couple of years, we've entered into that automatic aid agreement with the City of Cedar Rapids Fire Department. We were not able to receive credit for that as a part of this assessment as of yet, because there has to be an amount of data within the system in order for that to be reflective of the analysis. And then lastly, on the deployment side, those response gaps, as we're moving into the future and future CIP projects and how we look to evolve and make sure that we're providing that standards of coverage, there is an opportunity there as well. All right, so the impact on insurance premiums, so this has been the classic question and very thankful for able to get some data on this. So much appreciated to get that. Not just here, but in other communities, I've been asked, what's the impact of your ISO score on your insurance premiums? And I wouldn't be able to answer that question. And I would preface this that this is modeling and not necessarily always applicable in all areas and all spaces. But being that we're currently at an ISO three, you can see what the impact in the model would be on moving to an ISO four versus an ISO two or an ISO one. I'll point out on the residential side, you'll see that there is not a change between ISO two and ISO one. I I can't really speak to that and explain it other than that may be fairly scarce data to be able to articulate that bet for the insurance coverage on communities with ISO one. There are only two communities in the state of Iowa that are ISO one. That is Council Bluffs and Sioux City. With that, that's the end of the presentation. Do you have any questions for Gary or I?
Thank you. Interesting questions. I had somebody answered them. Go ahead.
On the on the fire portion of this, you you said we're rated at a three?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and Gary, what were we on your side?
Residential is is three and commercial, I'm sorry, residential is four and commercial is three.
Okay. And obviously, you listed some comparables that, you know, who can we take some, you know, benchmarking from in order to inform what do we, what do we do with this kind of information? So Sioux City is a one for
PPC.
PPC? Do you have any insights of how they do that? Is it something about their organization, deployment posture, just, I'm just curious, what there, and Bettendorf, I think, was the other one, wasn't it?
Council Bluffs.
West side of the state.
So I I, I do have experience working within an ISO one organization, and I do believe it's achievable here in Marion within the future. We're chipping away at this. It's going to take some time. But I believe as we continue to to move forward on process improvement, our scores will improve.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
I guess with talking about the improvements specifically to us having a training facility versus not being able to include the mutual aid agreement that we have at Cedar Rapids, do you have enough of kind of knowledge within the scoring that, do you know how much that would impact? If if that was included and if we had the training tower already or training facility already constructed?
So we can request a special assessment and because our next scheduled assessment wouldn't be for about three more years. We can, we can do some of that preliminary high level math with our ISO assessor to evaluate. Are we at that point confidently where we believe we would be transitioning to a two? I think there's no doubt from the time at which this was assessed with those improvements alone. Once the data is in the system to where we can articulate that to meet their expectations, I think that that's a value, value look to see our, you know, where where is that breakover and are we there? But I think that's something we can do in probably about a year.
It just seems like such big differences in terms of what we're doing in terms of training and the personnel that it's like, ah, it just feels like a big miss based off just the timing, not for our fault, but just for how the system works.
Yeah, and some of that, we were just reminding some of our teammates today, and and they do. Our firefighters love to train. They loved it. They especially love to train on firefighting. We don't always put the data in the system. And so it's really important as we've continued to remind them. You know, we've got to get that good data into where, you know, those types of things influence evaluations like this to where we can tell the story about how hard we're working.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yep.
Well.
Chief, I'm going to call out one of your scores.
Okay.
Can you go back to that?
Yes, sir.
The individual ones, yeah, there you go. The zero, five, say five, five, three, credit for reserve ladder and service trucks, a zero. How's the zero, what?
Yeah, so we currently have one ladder truck, which is Tower 91. And you'll see the credit for ladder service is 1.11 out of four points. It's very difficult to get all of those points. One encouragement that that I would share with our team is that we do have a CIP project underway this year for the purchase of an additional aerial apparatus, so that'll, that will help in the future.
Sure.
We're going to need a little patience because the construction time for those pieces of equipment are about four years. And so, and that's not just for us, that's that's everybody in the country, but we should see an improved score in that space as well.
But just because we only have one
Right, we don't have a reserve ladder.
Gotcha.
No.
Good to know. Thanks. Great. So, Gary, and you you make the remediations that you've already targeted based on this assessment. How long does it sift through the system, or how long does it take to sift sift through the system in order for it to have a beneficial impact on on insurance levels?
I can speak to that first on the on the data. So we need 12 months of data with our auto aid partners. Technically, we would, we would have that at the end of this calendar year, and we will be able to articulate that. Also, with the conclusion of the final construction of the the training center, we're really close to that as well. So as far as the timing on which those improvements would be scoreable, I think that's, is that, if I'm getting to the the gist of your question, we should, we should be able to have those conversations with ISO on the PPC side as early as next year. But as I was sharing with you earlier, when we update the SOC, that data will be reflective in there as well. And so there's two ways that ISO evaluates. For communities that have a standards of cover, which we now do, we didn't at the time of this assessment, they can use that data as a part of their assessment. Or their traditional as assessment is to do polygons around fire stations, depending upon the resources that are at that station. If it's a station that has an engine, it's a mile and a half polygon around each one of those stations. If it's a station that has a ladder truck, it's a two and a half mile polygon. And so, but our actual response data can be used if it's verified and validated as credible, which ours will be ultimately, once we go through the accreditation process, to where we could use that data, and they will use whichever score is better of those two.
So I just, you know, I just think is, so there's a slate of remediations, data collection, perhaps reassessment, and eventually that soaks through to the tangible impact on people's property insurance bills. And it'd be interesting, and I don't know if this analysis could be done, but we make an investment of, you know, X dollars. How does that manifest itself in terms of total monetary benefit to the community? And I don't know if that's even possible to do that. Randy, do you see what I'm going after?
If I could add just a little bit to that, Councilmember Harper, not every community is the same when when you do that, an analysis. Marion's assessment is unique to the risk in Marion. And so when they look at the factors that are driving the insurance rates and all of these things, it's based on unique risk. So when we look at the comparability, for example, if you were to look at the resources in one fire department and another, well, they have X stations, X trucks, X amount of firefighters. It's all relative to their community risk. It's not just all compares, equal comparison, well, they have this, they have that. So it's it's a tailored evaluation in each community.
But but we are using any and all data that we get, whether it's from this, the assessment for Chief or Gary's process or the community survey, and we're using that to dictate what are things we need to do within our operating departments to improve upon those scores or reduce our costs or improve our efficiencies for the benefit of our residents. So we are using the data as best as we can, and and it's just, it's a, it's a process that just never ends for us.
Anyone else?
I guess if I could just interject one thing, you know, to Mr. Harper's comment there. How these work from the insurance side, whether it's commercial property or residential, the minute the ISO publishes these findings, those then go to the actuaries of all the insurance carriers that are registered in that particular state, and then that will funnel down into the renewals. So they are fairly real time because the carriers know that those are competitive models in which they need to work against. I'm just, I want to just kind of cast something here as well. When it comes from insurance, there's eight perils of loss that are measured on the ISO rating. So peril number one is fire, two is wind, three is hail, four is other non-weather, five is other weather, six is lightning, seven is theft, and eight is water non-weather related. So crediting these gentlemen, our city, our staff, everybody that's involved with this. When I looked at these numbers, knowing that this was coming up for topic, I wanted to kind of see where the fire carried the weight on those eight perils, and it's carrying 65% of the credit over the overall scoring of the ISO rating. So a couple of these non-weather related, other weather related, and water non-weather related for Marion only, those were, those remain neutral. So if you have a one basis across eight, you ate it up, or excuse me, you added up, divided across, and that's what scores the entire policy for that community. When I took a look at those, fire was the number one that was carrying the ISO rating. Now, what we're all experiencing in our local communities here and in the state of Iowa, whether it's commercial or residential, for those that are listening, it's wind and hail. So if you take a look at your personal lines policies, what took the increase this year was wind and hail perils of your policy. Fire, so though, while those went up, fire is over here driving it down because of our response times, our water, our apparatuses, our class codes and ordinances for building and construction. And I was sitting here thinking about, you know, back last winter when we're having conversations about how we were going to try to change or the attempt was to change our code to get away with fiber board or moving to an insulated type board for an exterior shell of the homes. That impacts this ISO rating, which is exactly what we're fighting for here today. So had we not stood fast with some of those things, these impacts would not be as impactful as they are today. So kudos to you all and congratulations and keep up the good fight. When I started back in the 90s, our ISO rating was a five in our community. So to take these strides to get us down to a two, I had to do the research as well. I I could not find a class one, an ISO one rating. I had asked Chief Agen brought to my attention that we actually have two communities in the state, and I think that's why we're seeing the ratings are not being heavily reflected because nobody has been in that, has been in that field yet. So now that we're starting to see communities get into that field and that rating, I think you'll start to see rates will be more impacted by that because now there's going to be more players in that area. So thank you, you know, from from an insurance geek over here. And and actuarial, these are, these are real time things because this is what's impacting our community. So you have a half a million dollar house and you got a $5,000 homeowner with some premium, a premium 3% or 5%? That's a big deal. That's a big deal. That's real money out of your pocket. So thank you.
Thanks for that context.
One more question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So you may have covered this already, but so I, the ratings here are three, three and four, depending on whether you're residential or commercial. How do those compare to the report three years ago? Because it sounds like this report comes out every three or four years. So how did we compare to our last report?
Yeah, the PPC report is the same report. Gary was going to provide their report, and so just to provide clarity, we decided to present both reports together since they are both influencing the ISO rating, just to avoid confusion on which which ISO score is it? And so we, I think this is the first time it may have been done together.
It is. In our, in our, in the building department, our scores previously were three and four as well.
Okay.
Our numbers, our numbers got better.
Okay.
But just not enough to get us into that next classification. So we're we're working that way. We can do our reviews. We can, we can, like Tom said, we can, we can ask for it anytime. I wouldn't ask for one right now, but maybe because the last one was done in August of '24. I may ask for one in August of '26, just because I think that we'll be into a spot that we can actually improve and get into it, maybe a a three and a three or, you know, hopefully a three and a two. But we'll, we'll have to wait and see. I'm not going to ask for one if I don't think we can make that.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. All right, moving on with the agenda review. First item is on page four, A9, Sue.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Sue Wilber, HR Manager for the city. It's that time of year where we review benefits renewals, and so I have a slide here just highlighting the changes this year for health insurance. The police union is eligible this year for the high deductible health plan. We're expecting an 8.9% average increase to the health insurance total claims. Another change is removing the smoking rates from the police union. And then the pharmacy prudent RX program is ending this year. That is due to some legislature. For the dental program, there were no plan, plan design changes to that this year. Expecting an average 11.4% increase to the dental insurance claims. And then Vision is where the biggest change is, and we're recommending a switch from Avisys, our current carrier, to Delta Vision. We, they have a four-year price lock with that, and that is a little bit more affordable premiums for our employees. Are there any questions I can answer?
Questions?
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Sue. The next item is on page eight, A5, Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I'm handling this for Rachel. We talked to council, I think, one of the last meetings to get direction on adjusting the section of code for peddlers, solicitors, and transient merchants. Currently, we have all days eight to nine. The direction that we received was all days eight to eight, excluding federal holidays to match the region.
So that is what's on the agenda. I think we have one more slide, Terrell. So that is what is recommended. There was some minor discussion the last time with council to say Monday through Saturday, but we wrote it as, as the one that's recommended based on what we officially had as direction. So we don't know if council wants to discuss it any further, if we're comfortable moving forward as recommended.
Any thoughts on that one? Go ahead, Steve.
I know there was discussion last time. You know, we always, a lot of times, look at our, our policies and try to stay pretty comparable to Cedar Rapids in the area. And that's fine. I understand that. This one here, I have no problem deviating and excluding Sundays. I don't think you need to have somebody knocking on your door every day of the week. So I mean, again, if I were to pick it, I would exclude Sundays. But again, I, that was my opinion last time and it's still that way today.
So in our ordinance, if a resident posts on their door, no solicitation, they can do that and that just basically ends the, this consideration as far as they're concerned?
Sorry, Grant, I was looking at what I was going to say next. Could you repeat the question?
I've never had that problem, by the way. I just want you to know. Trust me. So if, if a resident posts on, on their door, no solicitation, that just kind of, I mean, they've just basically opted out of everything that could possibly happen. And the subtleties on the ordinance don't even apply to them because it says that a solic, a, a peddler solicitor would not go to the door.
That would be correct, but you know, you post that and somebody ignores it. You don't have a ton of recourse there unless they're coming over. And I will tell you, those Girl Scouts do not read those signs.
Okay. All right. Yeah. Well, I was thinking that, thanks.
Just a couple of things. Well, you say, we say that, and then, so first of all, I first, I concur with Steve. I kind of like the alternate option. It really makes it clear. I think the hard part, again, and I don't know why I'm into this digging in the details here, but I know, like maybe I'm too, too, I've been hanging around grant too much or something. I'm getting down in the, in the weeds on a lot of this, but so no pushcart operator or vendor. So that's, that is your Boy Scout popcorn sales? Those are your Girl Scouts? Are those your door knocking for the school board? Is that, is that now not allowed on Sundays?
This generally applies to any solicitations. We are not too terribly hard on our Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts if they don't get a license.
Or like the schools do a lot of, you know, sports team fundraising and we usually, you know, buy this card for this fundraiser, buy that card for that fundraiser.
Generally, this applies to people who are soliciting for business.
Like insect services, lawn services, window, window washing. I mean,
But technically, does this apply to them? To, to Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and grant knocking on doors for, for election or?
They don't answer.
I think as it stands now with our definitions, it would only apply to solicitations for a business, for a for-profit business.
Okay.
And I'm not sure how we would regulate if we had just volunteers and things like that. That would be a little bit more difficult than when we have a business that we require to have a license. We can send a, ED goes out and chats with them.
Well, go ahead, Grant. Could, can, well, okay, maybe this is going to prolong our resolution on this, but could we insert the language for profit?
I will take a look at our ordinance, but I believe that that is in the definition of, that we have for solicitors. But I will take a look at that and bring that back to you guys.
Girl Scouts don't meet that definition.
That is, they are nonprofit.
Yeah.
I shouldn't, that was just a joke.
Grant, do you have a, do you have a preference, recommended or alternate? Are you?
Well, I, I think I might have brought up the, let's exclude Sundays. I have a, I favor that, but I'm, you know, I think just the time reduction is really desirable too. So I personally prefer, prefer the alternate.
I just need one more for, for consensus.
Oh. Does anyone feel strongly against the alternate? Would all be okay with the alternate?
That's helpful. And then what we can do, Rachel is our subject matter expert on the processing of all things licenses. And certainly Kara is going to do the follow-up from the definition standpoint. But when Rachel's back in the office tomorrow, what we can do is we can ask her to email how, how she handles the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts and just local election type, not door knocking. So at least that way you have it before Thursday.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have one more follow-up question. Could we just, for the record, could we clarify, is this ordinance just for residential or is it and/or commercial and business as well? I'm sorry, and I mean for the brick and mortar businesses. I've been reached out by several of them that have been posting no solicitations on their businesses as well. So I just wanted clarity, is this ordinance just for residential areas or also commercial areas?
I will take a look in the code. I do not recall making any distinction. Just that they can only operate between these hours. They're required to have a license. And I, I don't believe we make any. It just says place to place.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next item is you, Kara. Do you want?
We're actually going to have Mike start out with a little bit of background to refresh you guys on the project.
Okay. So for a little background, this is the CPF money that we got from Henson's office. So this is Boyson Road here. This is Albernett Road to the north and Central to the south. And this will be the new Albernett Road that eventually is Second Street and then ties into Marion Boulevard. And then this along here is Eighth Avenue. So the properties in particular that we're talking about, in this case, are those that are south of Eighth Avenue and then one that is north of Boyson. So I'm just going to show an exhibit to kind of give an idea again on that. So this is Albernett Road going north-south. This is Eighth Avenue going east-west. So you can see we're starting the widening back here at Third Street, which is right here. And then there's a parking lot right here. And so we're taking the sidewalk and we're extending the sidewalk so that it connects to Albernett Road, which then that trail, you can take that trail all the way to Waterloo, Cedar Falls. You can take it all the way south to Iowa City and even almost to Camp Park between Tiffin and Oxford. So this is connecting that in there. So I know when Rachel Murtaugh came and gave her presentation on sidewalk gaps there, one side of the street was good enough. This is using federal money, so we have to do complete streets. We have to have sidewalks on both sides of the street. So that's why we're doing that. So it's, it's kind of hard to see in here. So I'm trying to zoom in, that really light line that says RW, that is the current right-of-way. And then that darker line that says RW is the new right-of-way. So you can see it's about five foot of acquisition in there for permanent acquisition. And that is to install the sidewalk so that we can push it back from the back of curb so that there's room for snow storage. And then there's temporary construction easements, and those are these white dash lines. And those are only temporary so that, for example, we can put their new driveway and match grades, match the street. And then that gets vacated when we're done with the project. So there's permanent acquisitions and then there's temporary acquisitions. And then up here in the north, so this is Boyson Road going east-west. Albernett Road is north-south and we're ending it right here. So this is where the old Albernett, like you can see the old right-of-way actually still exists through that area. With this property owner, you can see there's a lot of temporary because if you, like where that barn is, it sits up a little bit a ways. And so there's some shrubs along that south side. And so I know one of his concerns is he's going to lose those shrubs, but they are in the current right-of-way. So just wanted to kind of zoom on a few of that, those particular instances because they have been notified and they can come on Thursday and present information. But we do have HDR under contract to do that acquisition to meet with them. And hopefully what this does is then brings them back to the bargaining table.
Okay.
I'll let Kara take over unless there's questions.
No, Mike covered a lot of it. Really, we have three property owners that we have reached a kind of stalemate as far as negotiations go, or they are just simply refusing to negotiate at this point in time. And so our hope is that they'll know once we pass these resolutions that we are very serious that we will go to condemnation to be able to complete this project as required by our federal grant conditions. Or they'll come to the table and, and but again, if they don't, sorry, lost my train of thought there. If they don't come to the table, we're prepared and we'll be able to file condemnation so that we can stay on track for our project timeline and for our grant timelines. This is when, as Mike said, they've been noticed. They've, there are two property owners in particular that have been very vocal. So we're hoping that they do come and voice whatever concerns they have so that they feel as though they've been heard on that one. And we're just making sure we follow all of these processes to a T just so that we don't run into any issues with our federal grant money as far as the acquisitions go. There is one additional one, D10, that when we are not asking for authority for condemnation, we're just asking for fair market value on that one. We are still in negotiations. They have an attorney involved and so we'd like to have that set fair market value, value when we start our back and forth with their attorney.
Is that federal grant? Cleared now?
So we're still going through the environmental clearances. So there's two major issues that we're working through yet. But we're getting it ready. So once we have that money, we can go.
Okay. Any questions? Go ahead.
Kara, you said the one property owner has an attorney. Which of these, which one is that?
That would be for D10 for the duly property. Yes.
Thank you.
And we do have a few others that may come in the future, but they're still actively negotiating at this time.
Any others?
Yep. Just in terms of the high-level project milestones, at what point in time, generally speaking, would construction be active in the Eighth Avenue area for this project?
I can't speak to that because it's going to depend on contractor and how they want to tackle the projects.
Do we have any generalized timeframes, 26, 27, 28?
I don't want to speculate on that.
Okay. Too soon to ask.
Yes.
I would want to point out that we do have to have all of the acquisitions completed before Mike can, or they have to be set for condemnation before Mike can let the project. So even if they're not going to be constructed until later, we can't reserve the acquisitions.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Mike, can you just clarify again? I got lost in the weeds there. This is for widening that section of the road or is this for sidewalk? Are we going to have a sidewalk literally on that section?
So here in Albernett Road in Boyson, there'll be the sidewalk. So there's the existing side path. Again, sorry that there's not a bunch of colors, but there's an existing side path on the south side. And so we'll tie into that, but in the future it will go north, but it doesn't go anywhere right now. For the area that's on Eighth Avenue. So right now there is sidewalk right here where that parking lot is, but it ends there. So we are adding, that's the shade. So not only are we widening the street there, because if you recall, it's only two lanes and then kind of in this intersection, it widens to three lanes as you go west. So we're widening farther to the east. And so with that widening and adding that sidewalk in there.
Great. Thank you. Can we go back up to the Boyson Road section again? The, the question that I was trying to get specific to is the, the property owner to the north side of that. Can you tell me what are we, the temporary easements in there, what are those again for?
That, that's for grading. So those are the contour lines. So we're only widening the road there. There is no sidewalk.
Okay. And that's what I was trying to get at. Thank you very much for that clarification. I appreciate that.
Other questions? Okay. Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Kara. Next item is E4 on the back page. Nicole?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So we've got some zoning code amendments that I want to go through with you. They're in three different sections of our zoning regulations. The first one being our definition section. We're going to be clarifying our auxiliary dwelling unit attached and detached. I'm just adding some clarifying language when we're looking at the new state legislation, which will have amendments coming forward to you in the near future. With that, we're also removing then the dwelling unit accessory. It sits just above the auxiliary dwelling unit definitions and says basically C below. So we figured that was a little redundant and was unnecessary. Otherwise, we're adding two definitions, fueling, fueling pump. And that's just to help define that conversation we had during the Tower Terrace Road and the gas stations. And what exactly is the eight fueling pump? Does it service one vehicle or two vehicles? So this definition helps clarify what that is. And then snack bar and concession stand, and that kind of goes back to our snack shack that we will have up here in the Central Plaza this winter, and that's been out at Lao Park. The second section is within our non-conforming uses, buildings, and structures and pertains to non-conforming lots of records specifically. This is a cleanup item from back in 2022 when we did the citywide rezoning. This just kind of updates that year within this section of the code. So any lot that was appropriate for the zoning at the time with the zoning updates, if the lot with minimum had enlarged, it then became a non-billable lot. So this is just kind of cleaning that up with, from 2022. Then the last one being the compatibility with the comprehensive plan. We're just adding some language here that strengthens the tie between our zoning regulations and our newly adopted comprehensive plan. It really gets into our corridors, having more enhanced building materials, community services, that sort of thing. So it's just kind of doing some cleanup work with the zoning regulations. Any questions on these?
Questions? Pretty straightforward.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. Next is A E6, Emily.
Evening, Mayor and Council. We have an applicant that is seeking approval for a preliminary site development plan for the Lynn County Rural Electric Cooperative pole yard. They would like to expand it. So the existing property right now is just to the north of the parcel that they're proposing using for this expansion. The property is currently zoned PUD. They're not looking to rezone it. And in total, the development would be 17.1 acres. So the proposed project is a three-phase approach. They would be starting with a pole yard and then moving into an operations office building as well as a surrounding parking lot. The parking lot, they're proposing to have 70 spots, three accessible, as well as bike parking. This meets code standards. And then the last step would be a substation down there. We do not have a determined size yet for the substation. That will be a future decision based around demand at the time. In terms of the site, they're proposing an entrance off of 29th Avenue directly across from Prairie Hill Drive. And there were, at planning and zoning, some concerns that did come up in terms of deliveries interfering with possible bus routes. And we were, reached out to the property owner and they have stated they get about 10 deliveries per year. And those deliveries are between 8:30 in the morning and 3:00 PM. So staff doesn't see many issues with that interfering with buses. So staff doesn't see many issues with that interfering with buses. The driveway is also proposed to be wide enough that we don't, we don't see issues with turn or traffic. And then in terms of shading or sorry, screening, they are proposing along the southern and eastern edges, pretty intense landscaping that would kind of shield any of the buildings from the residential zoning that is across 29th Avenue. They're also proposing an eight-foot tall fence that again would help. And then along 29th, there is kind of a berm effect where the site itself is about five feet lower than street level. So that again will help with any of the screening. This was taken September 9th and approved five to, or recommended for approval at P and Z. Do you have any questions?
The screening, what are we screening?
Screening would be the.
Why?
Just there, we don't know what these buildings are going to look like. And any, anything across from residential needs to be, it's a code requirement to have screening.
So that's my concern. Why don't we know what the buildings are gonna look like?
That will be a next step. This, so tonight, this would be looking at just the location of where this would go. Any design of these structures, you would see them, you would see that step. This is just the initial one.
That would, that would need approval. And our design standards would apply to this building. So yeah. This is a major gateway, Highway 13, 29th Avenue. It's across from the brand new beautiful building, commercial building or mixed use building that's been built. Across from the neighborhood. Like, I think this is critical that we're very involved in what these are gonna look like upfront. What this is all gonna look like. And especially if there's a substation plan. You know, the substation that went in on Highway 100, we were promised there was gonna be $300,000 of, of landscaping there too. And I don't see $300,000 of landscaping in that, in that substation. I mean, I drive by it all the time thinking, I wonder. But anyway, so I just, I'm just kind of putting it out there that we really need to be involved intimately upfront with all the details. So anyway.
That is, that has been something that staff has talked about already, and that has been relayed to the petitioner. In terms of the, the sequence, this is normal sequence where the site plan is gonna come to council first and that's, that requires a separate action. And then all the other details will follow. So, so that has been discussed and relayed and certainly understood.
What if we don't even like the site plan? Like what if I don't want it to go to the next step?
Then, then council, you would vote it down and refer it back to planning and zoning.
On Thursday, okay. Because I mean, here's, here's what I'm saying. Yes, we have screening. Okay, we'll get to see the building. We're not gonna see a building of a, of a pole yard. So it's gonna be a bunch of electrical poles and then a substation next to it. Right? So there's no building codes that are gonna cover that. And we are, we have a brand new building that isn't even full, filled yet on the other side of 29th. I was told by people in that area that the owner wants to put another building between the building that just went up and Highway 13. If I'm that owner, I don't know if I want to do that if I'm going to be selling things that are gonna look out instead of, because apparently from the top floor of that new apart mixed use building, if you're looking west, you can look, you can see all the way to Uptown. Because they were saying one of the residents has already moved in there. They said it's shockingly like how much you can see from there. They can look all the way west. They can see all the way to the Cedar Rapids line if you're looking out over Lynnmar. And now they're gonna look a different way and see a pole yard and a substation on a major gateway into this community. So I'd say my inclin, I don't, I, I, I can't quite figure out why this is the best location for this and not in an industrial park. At least the pole yard in this, in the substation. So I guess that's what I was just looking for is clarification. If we don't even, if I'm not, this, to me, this is just, and I'd have to look back on our comprehensive plan, but I swear, I feel like I'm in Groundhog's Day. Because I feel like we go through these, we look at this, we talk about our gateways, we talk about what should go different places. We think we're protected under the comprehensive plan to make really good choices, at least on our gateways. And then we come back and here we are again, looking at questionable types of very permanent gateway plans. Again, and so, I don't know, I think, I don't mean to get frustrated with you because you're just bringing this forward. But in my world, I think that's where I get frustrated if I sound like it. It's just like, I feel like, okay, I think we're all on the same page. We've got this residential and we might have a, you know, other things going up here. And then we're looking at not retail, not destination, substations and pole yards.
Steve. Yeah, I mean, with what we described, the only item I think we really have much control over is what that building is gonna look like. The pole yard is gonna look like a pole yard. I mean, the substation, we know what that looks like. And we know how bad of a job they did on screening on 44th Street and Highway 100. That's, still looks terrible in my opinion. So have, have they considered, I mean, I know they own this land. I understand why they're wanting to put it there. Have they considered any other location?
Not that we're aware of, but we can check with them.
Can we ask that question please?
Emily, can you just again illustrate where the substation would sit here?
Yeah, it would be down here.
Okay, okay, that's good. And then what about their existing building?
So they have an existing substation here, an existing warehouse here, existing vehicle maintenance building here, and then their office building is currently here.
Okay. Is the involted data center showing on this depiction or is that further down?
It's to the west of that, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm not.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be down on the, on this.
It'd be down on the screen, yep.
Well, contrary to my colleagues here, I think substations are a thing of beauty most of the time, but I just leave it at that. Learned more about those things than I ever wanted to know. I guess, you know, are there, adjacent to this particular footprint, I'm curious if there isn't alternatives, A, for the substation to be set back away from 29th, away from 13. And also perhaps rethinking where the laydown for the pole yard would be. And again, is there available property that is somewhat adjacent to this that isn't an encumbrance on REC's operational requirements? I do know that there is a, I think, a fairly significant either single or double circuit pole line that runs along the north side of 29th. And so I can see why maybe that's why the substation is being cited as it is currently. I just wonder what other alternatives they have on adjacent properties, if you get what I'm saying.
So we, when staff went through this on Friday, we asked to make sure that the petitioners hear on Thursday for the public hearing so that they can speak to the merits of the project and answer those questions that council may have. Going back to council and mentors question, if as part of the presentation and the response to the questions, council's not satisfied, would like more information, would like different visuals, whatever the case may be, then the recommendation would be referred back to planning and zoning and have them continue to do their work. As planning and zoning is a board, board and commission that, that does this nitty gritty work on behalf of the council, that would be an appropriate place to send it back to with some of those, those comments that, that we were hearing. And certainly staff will make sure we relay this and ask those questions of the petitioner. But in terms of process, get it back to that entity and let them, let them kind of go through and dig a little deeper if that's what needs to be done.
Anybody else have anything?
Go ahead. I was just gonna comment on, kind of, it was kind of brought up that, that, well, first question, when was the building actually gonna be? They don't have a date for that building to be built yet, correct? Wasn't it to be determined?
I believe in one of their letters, it was 2031. They were projecting Phase Two, which is the office building, and project, projecting the substation around 2036, depending on needs of the community.
So the pole building would be now, basically?
The pole yard.
Pole yard, yeah, sorry.
Correct.
Okay. So my, my, what I was just gonna throw out there is if it could be reconfigured and it was kind of brought up to if it, different land area, but there is that waterway that runs through there. I was at the P and Z meeting for this one, so I kind of heard some of it. So, but that was just gonna be my suggestion of reconfiguring it in some way, if possible. But I was also gonna comment on, yes, if there was gonna be screening of trees, they need to be not two inches tall, they need to be large.
Well, yeah, I mean.
Trees.
I don't know what the process is for enforcement of that after the fact because we really did, I mean, I don't see the $300,000 of landscaping that was promised on the other one.
Can.
Go ahead.
This, um, this may be more of a question, Ryan, for you, but, or whoever's up at the planning and zoning meeting where, where these are discussed. Are they, they're taking into consideration the layout and then, you know, I'm sure certain parts, but do they take into consideration? Or is it, is that really why it come, I mean, council's ultimate decision on this? In this, is this the right place for something? Or are they looking at how does it fit on the space?
They're looking at how does it fit on the property, the layout, looking at the screening, the contours of, of the land. It's not necessarily, I mean, as the, the land owner, they have the ability to make that request. So they're not gonna, planning and zoning is not really gonna be the ones that are gonna say, can you put this somewhere else? Council has a little bit more clout where you can do that. My guess is you're probably gonna get the same response P and Z would get. I've seen petitioners ask that by, by councils before and while we on the ground. So, but, but council certainly has a little bit more clout to do that.
Is the pole yard that is in, that fits the comp plan?
So if I may answer this.
Yep.
Let me just piggyback on what Ryan was saying first, and then I'll answer your question about the land use, Sarah. So with this being a PUD, the intent originally when it was zoned PUD was for utility purposes. If this was a rezoning request with a land use amendment, then by all means, the Planning and Zoning Commission would be looking at, is this the best place in use for that specific zoning district or those uses? Because the zoning is in place for this intended use, they are following what had been approved previously through that PUD zoning. As far as land use within our land use, future land use map, it does designate this area as commercial. We really didn't have a, if I recall right, utility necessarily showing. But commercial is identified for the area along Highway 13.
So a pole yard fits commercial?
But it, it goes, in this particular case, it's gonna revert back to the original PUD. So the original approval, so the land, the, the land use and the comp plan would layer over that. So if such time that the Lynn County REC went away and sold that property, then it would have to, then it would have to comply with the, the land use that's established. But because it was done by a, a PUD before any of that, that takes precedence.
Okay, this may be a deeper discussion for later. I won't tie this whole thing on the PUD vision decisions. You know, I wear that a lot, so we'll leave that at a separate time. We won't drag this out, but, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you so much. We'll take any questions on any other items on the agenda that were marked by staff for discussion. Okay, that brings us to the closed session.
Mayor, I move to adjourn to closed session regarding real estate transactions and litigation of tremendous, or section 21.51J and section 21.51C of the Iowa Code, two separate items.
Second.
Moved in second to adjourn to closed session regarding real estate transactions and litigation. We have the legal counsel statement, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I reviewed the proposed matter for the closed session and find same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section 21.51J and 21.51C.
Okay, any discussion before we take the vote? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen.
Yes.
Mr. Harper.
Yes.
Mr. Miscaman.
Yes.
Mayor Abalosili.
Yes.
Ms. Menser.
Yes.
Mr. Brandt.
Yes.
Mr. Sternad.
Yes.
All right, thank you for all for joining us. We're adjourned to closed session.